This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I'm sorry. All board members are in attendance with Diane Kelly, Commissioner, on virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On June 6th, Robert G. Habel passed away after a valiant fight against cancer. Bob was 57 years old. Bob served the township as a life member of the Greenwalds Fire Company, joining in 1978, and serving as chief from 1994 to 2002. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Chief Habel.
Thank you, John. All public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded. The electronic record is kept until the minutes of the meeting are approved and destroyed if a request is not made to retain the electronic version at that time. Randy, would you please read the public virtual meeting rules?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of tonight's agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president, in this case tonight, the board vice president, will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, simply raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually tonight, please mute your microphone or telephone to keep any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout tonight's meeting. If you have a comment or a question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session on the following dates to discuss legal and/or personnel items. We met after the June 1st meeting and tonight before this meeting. At the present time, do I hear any public comment on non-agenda items? Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Paul. My address is 1415 Frederick Street. I stand here before you yet again questioning the same issue. Who is responsible for our police department? Asked last meeting if we're going to court, having received no satisfactory answer from the township. On providing information concerning the incident I have reported, filed the complaint about, requested the body cam footage to judge said officer's primary or misinformed information causing this incident. The township stands mute. I've been sure the officer involved has been disciplined, reprimanded, elected to session, and that the commissioners were fully informed on this matter. I questioned whether you have seen the body cam footage of the incident involved. I requested to see the body cam footage under Act 22 of 2017, and have basically been given the denial of, "I don't want to." That just doesn't cut it, folks. After interacting with said officer shortly after the incident over the phone, and meeting him outside the magistrate's court, and then in the magistrate courts this past week, I am convinced of the imperative to view the body cam footage of Officer Michael Hosa. At this time, I'm presenting Chief Dorni with the documents I have filed with the Court of Common Pleas, Lehigh County, today. So I guess we'll see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I am asking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 1st. Do I hear a motion? I'm sorry, sir. What happens when you have a rookie running the meeting, you know? State your name, please, and address.
And I want to thank the past commissioners and president commissioners and the people of South Whitehall Township for saving the dam. I appreciate that, and want to thank the mayor and his staff because he's got a beautiful park there at South Whitehall Township Park, Covet Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rob, anything in the chat? Non-agenda items? Seeing none. Anyone else? I don't want to miss anyone. Seeing none. Motion for Board of Commissioners for the meeting minutes for June 1st. Do I have a motion? So moved. Mr. Osborne, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Hodges, any comments or questions on the agenda? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are no presentations this evening. Ordinances, we have three of them by John France, and...
Would you like me to speak to them one at a time, or how would you like me to handle it?
I personally would like to do all three at a time.
You're good, because they all are related. February this year, the Commonwealth and the Uniform Construction Code adopted the 2018 versions of the International Code Council of Construction Codes. Three ordinances before you tonight for the International Building Code, which deals with commercial properties, the International Residential Code, dealing with residential properties, and the International Plumbing Code, dealing with the plumbing code and commercial properties, all 2018 edition. Again, they were adopted by the Commonwealth in February. There are items that need to be filled in, fill-in-the-blank questions or items, climatic data, things that are specific to this area geographically, and also a few things that we have carried forward over the years since prior to 1999. But ask that you consider approving these ordinances so that they are available for contractors and designers to use to get the design information they need to work in the township.
Any questions from the board from Mr. France, Mr. Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. John, first of all, thank you very much for preparing all this work. Took a lot of research and, of course, documentation.
You're welcome.
Putting it together. My question is this: Are there any, in your opinion, any changes to these ordinances that would cause a contractor or even a resident by surprise because it's significantly different? And if so, is there a way to maybe communicate that prior to a problem?
There is nothing different in these ordinances from what was previously adopted. Section numbers have been changed. There was a table in the International Residential Code that is significantly more in-depth in the code requesting more information. Yes, in that case Barry Isen and Associates provided the data for that. But insofar as is it specific to South Whitehall Township that it's more information? No. Okay, that's across the board throughout the Commonwealth. Again, we just had to fill in different pieces of information. And that dealt with residential energy. But no, there's nothing, the changes that is more stringent or any changes on South Whitehall's end.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Monica?
Yeah, thank you. John, I have a quick question. I remember when you went over these at the 5-18-22 meeting?
Yes.
And I had asked you then about the process when there's a code violation, and you walked me through that. Thank you. My next question is, how do we know if there's a code violation? Is code enforcement, do they come periodically to check on the job and make sure everything's okay? How can you tell that something is being violated?
Usually what happens is the inspectors are called out to do the inspections, and they find things that were done that were in violation of the code. That's usually what happens. And when I say usually, 90-some percent of the time. There may be times that things are done and inspections are not called for, and of course, we have to find out about those through one way or another. Quite honestly, we've had residents come and complain about their contractors doing things, knowing that they did not get inspections, for instance. So that's another way that we find out about these things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a couple of questions. The first one's along the same lines. So how are the penalties enforced? I mean typically, including like, whose role is it to enforce the penalties?
Okay. The inspections need to be performed by a certified inspector with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So that will be our third-party agencies. In the case of fire protection systems, commercially, that would be me. So if I would call something out that would be a violation, we have to provide it in writing with the code section, and then give a cause for remedy. How can this be fixed? The first thing that really would happen is, if they don't want to do it, for instance, they would go to our Building Code Board of Appeals and go through that appeal process. If they, if then, if they don't want to choose that route and they just choose not to do it, it would be myself as the building code official that would file a citation using Attorney Zader's office to get the situation remedied.
Okay. So thank you for that. I was thinking about like the backend, so like when you get to that point where there is a penalty of, let's say it's just one day and it's $1,000. Whose role in the township is it to like, make sure that $1,000 is paid?
I cannot answer that question. I do not know. I've only ever had citations issued and penalties imposed for violations of the Fire Prevention Code. That was a long time ago. Honestly, do not remember. Matter of fact, it was so long ago that Magistrate Hammond was not even in office, which has been in quite a few years. I don't know who checks on the collection of that. I don't know if Scott would know.
Okay, thank you. Can you give an example? I don't need a deep technical answer.
Sure you don't.
I'm sure, you know. So I'll break the trend, all right?
No problem.
So there's a paragraph in it that talks about the double backflow prevention.
Yes.
I realize that that can be a safety issue.
Yes.
But can you highlight either a safety issue that has occurred or what might occur? I mean, usually you don't want bad stuff getting
Absolutely.
to where there's good stuff, which was our water supply, right?
Absolutely. And that section is in the Residential Code for residences and in the Plumbing Code at the request of the Public Works Department. That was on the books before I started for the township in 1995. The scenario that would happen is that the protection of potable water is the most basic and fundamental protection in the Plumbing Code. That's why when the water comes out of your spigot and the floodrim of your fixture, there's an air gap. Anytime something that can happen, it can defeat that and suck bad things back up into the potable water, we need to protect against that. Public Works has that requirement. In case, for instance, there is a water main break out in the street, there is, let's say, the fire department hooks up on a fire hydrant, causes a vacuum in the system, a negative pressure condition, and starts sucking water, starts creating a vacuum, starts sucking water or sucking air, backflow preventer keeps any cross connections that may have occurred in a building from contaminating the township system. I believe it's also in there, and I'm not a water operator, but the water operators, since I started here till now, are very passionate about the protection of their water system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Herb.
Anyone else on the board? Any from the public chat? Rob? All right, so hearing that, I'd like to hear a motion that we approve ordinances A, B, and C. Do we hear a motion? So moved. Mr. Osborne, do we hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Walker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to another ordinance, which is on, which was possible adoption, is Tom Harper, Code Enforcement.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight for adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. This code deals and sets the parameters for the high grass and weeds at 12 inches. It also sets the parameters for winter heating requirements in dwellings. It also has the Township Building Code of Appeals as its board for any appeals of any violations. This code pretty much is the standard code that code enforcement uses to enforce exterior, interior property issues, et cetera. So I'm looking for you to please adopt this this evening.
Thanks, Herb. Do we have any comments from the, from our board? Seeing none from the public? Currently. Yeah, please.
Sir, can you please state your
State your name, please.
I'm Don Sheetsley. I live at 1411 Hampton Road. So I've been coming to here since we dealt with hotels, Zoomed. My concern is, back to his point, is that we seem to do a poor job maintaining the grounds of South Whitehall. Like, I walk every day by Bulldog Drive, and the grass, the weeds are like three feet tall. I look at Mack Truck, it's maintained like a garden, and I look at our schools, it's all weeded, you know, it just doesn't present to me the good image that South Whitehall should. To me, it looks like what's outside should be what's inside. I don't think it does that. So that's why I came tonight.
I know some of this stuff around the highways is Pendott, and they have contractors for that. Get to it.
But you see how, but this inside the fence, I mean, this is
On the Yeah, even though they have a fence there, sir, their right-of-way comes back further than that.
Do we make, do we tell them they gotta, in some cases, it's a safety
We reach out, we do team up with the state on some of that. One of our machines was currently down waiting from parts from Canada. That has come in. So we do have two machines out now every day. So we will help the state. If we get there first, we cut it. If the state gets to some of our locations before we get there as they're en route, they just cut it. So that will be taken care of.
But even when we did cut it, it's still like a foot tall. I mean, I'm looking at Mack Truck, right? Our property should look like Mack Truck property. And even the Spring House School, it's got full of weeds, stuff, all of the sign still says no H in it. I mean, it's just, you know, don't we weed and feed the property that we, that South Whitehall owns, the schools and otherwise, and can't we maintain it? So it's something we're proud of.
Sure. If you'd like, if you're still here at the end of the meeting, I'd like to get your name and phone number and meet you right at the place where you're talking about and see if we could rectify the problem for you.
Okay, it's just in general, I'm used to, you know, not long of a gardens, but if you, if you walk by Spring House, I do that every day when I make my walk, and I freak out when I see all the weeds at the signs, and they still can't get an H on Spring House. And you wouldn't want your house grass to look like what's on Spring. So that's all I'm saying. I think we should be proud of what we do and take more.
Well taken, sir. Thank you. Any other comments on the, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance from Mr. Harper?
So moved.
Mr. Walker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Osborne. Ms. Hodges. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to a resolution. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, appointing Herbert Bender as interim township manager and establishing compensation for interim township manager position effective July 1, 2022. Do we hear any comments?
I have some comments.
Commissioner Walker.
Herb Bender. I have the utmost respect for you and trust in you. You will have my unconditional support as our interim township manager. You have impeccable integrity. You're a strong leader with a very effective communication. You're very action-oriented, and you're a problem solver who gets results. I see that you're already rising to the occasion beyond your public works role with creative thinking and new improvement ideas. And I look forward to watching you demonstrate what you can do in this new position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Any other comments on Herb? Ms. Hodges?
Well said, Commissioner Walker. I can't do any better than that. I just want to thank you for stepping up. Thank you very, very much, Herb.
I'd like to echo both their comments, Herb. I know you'll do a great job. Thank you. Any other comments? Anything from the audience, anything in the chat? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Herb Bender interim township manager on July 1st? Do we hear a motion?
Motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 5-0 can't be opposed. Well, thank you, Herb, for stepping up. We appreciate it. I'd like to call on Scott now. The resolution for the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, for adopting a fund balance policy.
Good evening, Commissioners. In our management letter from the 2016 to 2019 audit report, our auditors suggested that the township develop a comprehensive fund balance policy. As part of our many efforts to overhaul our financial reporting and improve our finance department here at South Whitehall, we have made the inception of a fund balance policy a high priority. In conjunction with the members of the Finance Committee, including Dave Kennedy and Mike Walker, we have finalized the fund balance policy that we bring before the BOC tonight. The details of such are very similar to the last presentation. However, at the Finance Committee, we determined to make one change, which was in line with a suggestion made by Commissioner Kelly, which was to reduce the amount of time to replenish the fund balance. We had some conversation on the matter, and given that we agreed with Diane that five years was too much time, we also felt that two years would be too restrictive of a timeframe. So the language you'll see in the policy is three years to replenish the fund for any, any plan to do that. So the policy states that we will maintain a balance in the following funds with the following metrics. For the general fund, it will be 20% to 30% of annual revenues. Currently, we have $7.8 million in fund balance for the general fund, which is within that range, and there's no further work to do there. In the water fund, we have set a set amount based on the need of perhaps an immediate water well contamination or major infrastructure failings. We determined the amount of $5 million of net position to be adequate for the water fund. Currently, we are at $4.2 million in the water fund. For the sewer fund, largely due to the unexpected or largely unknown, not unexpected, future expense of the Kleins Island sewer expansion via Lehigh County Authority, and we don't know what that's going to be eventually, but we need to prepare. We determined that the amount of $10 million in the sewer fund will be adequate there. Currently, we are at $5 million there. And then lastly, in the refuse fund, we have determined an amount equal to two months of operating expenses, which is standard for an enterprise fund such as the refuse fund. This amount would be about $447,000 based on our last year. We are currently at $529,000. So we're there. The water fund for the next year, in terms of a three-year plan, I know that could be highly concerning. The big area where we would need to do work toward these amounts is the sewer fund. So I just want you to be aware of that. The budget impact to get to that amount within three years is about $1.7 million each year.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have any questions for Scott on the fund policy?
Yeah, just a quick question, Scott. So, so the sewer fund?
Yes.
By definition, it says the unrestricted should be $10 million.
That's correct.
And you said we have $5 million.
Yes.
Where, where does this $2 million restricted fit within that?
That would be within the $5 million, the $2 million that we set aside last year in the budget process.
Yeah.
Yes, that's within the $5 million.
Okay, thanks.
Brad. Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Scott, we spoke a little bit earlier today, and I'm sorry it was as late as it was. But my first question would be, would you be willing to, the summary that you just gave about where we are currently and what the goals, you know, in this policy, would you be willing to email that to me or?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'll send it out to the full board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess, and a general comment that I'd like to make is, this is a professional piece of work. It is really good. And I've seen many different levels of government over many years, and this is the best fund, fund balance policy I have ever seen. Most often, they're absent. So I wanted to thank you, the Finance Department, the Finance Committee, Commissioner Kennedy and Commissioner Walker, for putting this together. It is
A very collaborative effort.
Over, yeah. And it's obviously a lot of work put into it. And here's the advantage that I see to this. It keeps this board, future boards, and everyone involved in the finances, let's say in this case, in the township, gives them guiding principle. It gives them some direction, which is so good so that we don't lose sight of what we always need to be aware of. So I, and I really like this. I really do. The other thing that I would maybe suggest is, is a five-year financial projection that would be married to this, and it would be one of the ways that we can show each other, how are we going to get to these minimums, let's say, in the fund balance. So those are my comments. Mostly, this is a professional document, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Brad. Any other comments? Anything, anything from the public? Oh, good. Do I hear a motion to approve the fund balance policy? So moved. Mr. Walker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Hodges. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Scott, you're up. Motion to proceed with purchase of ClearGov budget software to support South Whitehall Township budgetary needs.
As another part of our efforts to improve the Finance Department, we are requesting the board approve the purchase of a budget software, which will be used to prepare all South Whitehall Township budgets prospectively beginning in the year 2023 with the 2023 budget. After vetting several vendors, attending demos, asking questions, we are confident that ClearGov is the best solution for the township's immediate needs. While some vendors had more comprehensive programs, we felt for the immediate future, the price and functionality could not be beat with this program. To give you an idea, one of the other vendors came in at around $75,000 for the first year. So just, just to give you an idea there. ClearGov is the specific software that we are requesting. This is a cloud-based software. It will allow the township to have a centralized location for our budget for the entire process. It's a website-based digital budgeting book. So we have a deliverable that we can put on our website that we can have residents look through. You can even print one out and bring to budget workshops in the future. There are pre-built custom reports, tools for multi-year and multi-scenario decision-making, such as forecasting, like Commissioner Osborne alluded to. There's many benefits to having this type of product at, at the township. The current budget impact for this current year will be $18,600. Future budgets will be impacted $26,000. They were able to prorate it for the amount of time that we're not using it for, which is the months prior to this. And that cost will increase 3% each year after. That's, that's what they told me. The implementation is, is expected to take approximately four weeks, which will allow us to move on the 2023 budget fully equipped. So we do have $200,000 budgeted in the contracted services area for various finance department improvements, of which we have $188,000 remaining. So we, that's where this money will come from, and it has been budgeted this year. Also, I would like to add, the Finance Committee does recommend this as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Scott did make a presentation to us at the Finance Committee meeting. So any comments for, from the board? Ms. Hodges?
I have a question, Scott. Just a quick question. Do you know of any other municipalities around here using it, or have you gotten recommendations from?
Yeah, when I went to the GFOA conference back in early May, I was able to speak with other municipalities, other directors of finance that use ClearGov. One of them is from White Marsh Township down, down near Philadelphia. They use it, and there's some others. There's a couple, there's two main players in the budget sphere. There's OpenGov, there's ClearGov, there's some other smaller ones. There's others that are ERP systems. OpenGov seems to be geared towards large cities. So think your Philadelphias, your Scranton's, that kind of, that kind of municipality. ClearGov tends to focus their efforts on the small municipalities, which are, you know, we fall well within that, that area.
Okay. And suppose we're working with it for a certain amount of time, and we find either something better, or it doesn't fit our needs at some point, how easy is it to get out of the contract? Is it a yearly or?
This contract, we, we need to give that, I believe it's 60 days written notice. So there is an ability for us to get out of this if we need to. Yeah, but I'll, I'll email you the specifics tomorrow. It might not be 60, but I'm pretty sure it is.
We're not locking up for long term?
No, 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 no. The The piece earlier when I said, "will be used to prepare all budgets prospectively", is that we'll never go back to the dark ages of Excel.
Yeah, that's the first comment I wanted to make. So Scott explained to us at the Finance Committee that there's productivity improvements, and you sort of, you know, you stated it here, but this will really eliminate a lot of manual work that is required by your team and using a spreadsheet, basically, to do what the software system will do in the future. I want to give Scott some positive feedback because, just like the fund balance policy, you did outside research to produce that tremendous document. And here, like you just said, you did outside research to look at what the appropriate software packages are. I want to commend Herb and Scott. The night before the Finance Committee meeting, you guys spent a couple, two, three hours reviewing this, so you'd be able to present it to us in detail like you did. So really appreciate that.
Thank you. We're excited.
Thanks, yeah. Any other comments from the board, public, chat? Do I hear a motion? Diane, thank you.
Hi, yes, I had a comment, just a follow-up to Monica's question. If we were to want to back out of this, would there be any penalty? I know it would be a 60-day notice.
Scott's looking, Diane.
Yeah, I've got it in front of me.
If you don't have it right now, you can email it with the other documentation.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, let us know on that.
That's fine. And I just wanted to echo some of the other comments. Thank you for researching and for finding some software that will help, obviously, your department, but also our commissioners and our community work through the budget process this year and in the years to come. So thank you to all who worked on that, including the Finance Committee.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion? Don't move.
Motion to approve.
And Diane Kelly. And all those in favor of approving ClearGov budget software? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to proceed with accounts adjustable over $2,500. Tricia, I believe you're on, Assistant Director of Finance.
Good evening, Commissioners. In short, these are, this is a request to void two invoices that were issued back in April of 2017 for a project that was done at 3411 Hamilton Boulevard. So just to summarize it for you, two invoices were issued for tapping fees. Those calculations, those invoices were later recalculated, and two new invoices were issued in May of 2017. So this is essentially, these original two invoices are on the books unnecessarily, really should be voided. Call it an adjustment, call it a void. We thought it was best to approach the full board and just seek approval to process these voids. Subsequently, I'm sorry, I should add, subsequently, the corrected invoices that were issued in May of 2017 were paid in full.
Okay, just for clarification, the interim township manager, township manager has authority to approve $2,500 and under. So the reason it's come to the board tonight is because these are both over $2,500. So.
If I can just correct you, they're not both over $2,500. Only one is over $2,500, but the combined total is over $2,500. So we didn't feel like processing the void on one just because it fell below that threshold was the right thing to do.
Which needs approval by the board to override. So any other comments, any comments from Tricia on those? From the public, chat? Brad, go ahead, I'm sorry, Brad.
Thank you. I guess I just have one. Mr. Owsowski, is he aware of this?
So I believe what happens is when the general billing gets processed, I believe general billing happens monthly. I think what triggered this is this individual received the general billing invoice for old charges that should have been written off, and that's what brought this to the forefront now.
Oh, he brought it to us.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I went to high school with Joe.
Oh.
Yeah, he would pick that up.
Too, if I didn't want to pay twice for tapping fees, that's.
Which makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the adjustment over $2,500? I'll make a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh has it. Thank you, thank you, Tricia. Appreciate it. Moving on, we have two items from our fire commissioner. Motion to approve budget transfers within the 2022 fire budget and motion to approve budget transfers for Woodlawn Fire. So Chris, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first one I'll do is just the budget transfer. The background is they, this is to balance the items within the 2022 fire budget. We're looking to make a transfer that will bring the maintenance and services repair account back up to zero. So I'm looking to move $3,451.44 from a miscellaneous supplies account to the maintenance and service repair to bring that budget back up to zero. That account will be closed out and not available for anything additional.
I'm sorry, where's the 3,400 coming from?
The 3,400 is coming from the miscellaneous supplies account.
What would normally be in that account? Miscellaneous supplies?
Miscellaneous supplies, like as far as what are they purchasing with?
We don't need that, or we don't need that money?
There's still, there's enough in that that it allows me to still have money in the miscellaneous account. But that does bring the other line items back up to a zero balance instead of being over budgeted.
Okay, I was going to ask that. I was going to ask if it was going to create a deficit in that other?
It will, it will not. There's still enough funds in that account that it's acceptable to make that move. You're welcome.
Any questions on that? Anything from the public, chat? Do I hear a motion to move the maintenance supply to the service? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hodges, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five oh carries. Thank you. Good. Chris, you have another item there?
Yes, and the next one is actually within the Woodlawn Fire Department's 2022 fire budget. Basically, their miscellaneous supplies was over budgeted. And I did talk with the chief search from there, and they are acceptable, and it would work. They have enough in their uniform and clothing allowance to move over to miscellaneous supplies to zero that out. So we're looking to move $2,919.08 from uniform and clothing over to miscellaneous supplies, and that'll bring that miscellaneous supplies back up to a zero balance. So that'll even that out. And there still is money in their uniforms account, and they were, that was the one that had the most money in their account, and they were acceptable to making that move.
Any comments on that? Anything from the chat, anything in the public hearing? Do I hear a motion to do the Woodlawn Fire? Don't move, Mr. Osborne, and I'll make the second, Diane Kelly is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh carries. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Moving on, motion to reject the bids with regard to the pole barn, Mr. Herb Bender.
Good evening, Commissioners. May 16th at 10:00 AM, South Whitehall Township received and opened two bids for the above referenced project. The bid was advertising local publication as required by law, and 46 potential bidders downloaded the bid documents. The bid tabulation is attached. Public Works requesting to reject both bids received that the pricing was much higher than expected. We budgeted $300,000 for this entire project, which consisted of $50,000 for the heating and $250,000 for the pole barn construction. The lowest bid submitted was $297,420. Was not projected to come in so high, the high response are attributed to rising costs of material and labor. We are hereby requesting the Board of Commissioners reject both bids submitted as it is not the best interest of the township to proceed with this project at this time. And just so everyone knows, I did talk to the one company who bid this, and it is due to the price of lumber and metal. That's why this building has come in so high. When we, before budget season, we did go out to get some quotes. We actually shrunk the size of this building a little bit, and the quote we got before was only around $225,000. So due to the world we're in today.
Thank you, Herb. Comments from the Commissioners?
Your recommendation is a fine example of cost control.
Thank you.
Anything from the public, chat, Ms. Hodges?
I'm sorry, Herb, I have a quick question for you. Was this construction basically just the shell? Did it include windows and the bay doors and insulation? Or was it just the shell of the building?
It was for the concrete floor, the garage doors, the two regular doors, and the shell of the building, yes. And to keep that price lower, we were actually going to do all the excavating and subbase work in-house with the Public Works Department to keep this price down. But, so this is a very high price.
Okay, so what's the next step? Are you going, I know you need that building. Are you going out to bid?
No, we're not going to, we're not going to put this back out this year. After talking to the contractors, they said it would probably be in our best interest to wait a year or two to put this bid back out because materials are starting to trend down a little bit.
And when you put the bid out, where do we advertise it? Is it just?
We can either go to Parkland Press, the morning call, and then it goes on PennBid after the public.
It does go on PennBid. Okay, because I was wondering, I'm thinking more residential, but I'm thinking if we extend it maybe out of our area a bit? Like, I know there's a lot of Amish contractors.
Well, being a municipality, we have to put it through PennBid.
Okay.
To, because of the price, so we have to put this out to bid. We can't just get quotes and go with it.
Okay, so we couldn't, in addition to the morning call and the Parkland Press, we couldn't go, say, to the Reading Eagle or anything to get?
Yes, we could do that, yes, yes. We can do a public notification out further next time also.
Because I was just wondering, some of these Amish companies, are they really reasonable? You know, I thought maybe if we expand, next time if we expand the bidding radius? I don't know, it's just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely try that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to reject the pole barn bid? Don't move, Commissioner Walk, do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five oh carries. Thank you. Thanks, Herb, for being a steward of our money. Okay, you're also up. Motion to proceed with purchase of supplies to install sanitary sewer chamber stacks.
Yes, these sewers, these sewer stacks will go onto the two sewer chambers located on Martin Luther King Drive. The reason for these chambers is that when it rains heavy, the sewer lines get backed up and causes the chambers to blow out. The stacks would allow us to install them, would allow the air that is trapped in the top of the chamber to be released to give us more volume, which would stop the air pressure from blowing the seams out. We do have them on all our manholes currently on the run down Martin Luther King, and we have no issues with those at all. The reason we're coming now to do this is because the cost of materials keep going up. So we did go out to get quotes with this, so we just want to buy the materials now. We are going to do this project in-house instead of outsourcing it. So instead of waiting to see if there's going to be another increase in parts and price, we are looking to go get the parts now, put them to the side, and then install them in the fall.
What's our cost stories?
The cost for this is $2,297.84. To outsource this, it was going to be around $15,000. So again, we have a pretty big savings with doing it in-house.
Thank you. Any comments on public chat? Do I hear a motion? Go ahead. Is that a motion, Diane?
Yes, motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Hodges, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five oh carries. Thanks, Herb. All right, correspondence and information, I'll turn this over to Randy.
Okay, so we still have some current vacancies on our boards and commissions. Civil Service Commission, we have one alternate vacancy, one vacancy on our Green Advisory Council, two vacancies on Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy for the Parks and Recreation Board, and three vacancies for the Environmental Advisory Council. We do have some upcoming meetings here over the next few weeks. On Thursday, June 16th, we'll have our next planning commission. That is actually a comprehensive plan workshop at 7:00 PM. Friday, June 17th, will be the next movie in the park at Spring House Park. That was rescheduled from May 20th. The movie, I believe, is Luca. On Monday, June 20th, the next Green Advisory Council meeting will happen at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, June 22nd, will be the next zoning hearing board meeting at 7:00 PM. Thursday, June 23rd, will be the next emergency management services meeting at 7:00 PM. Thursday, June 23rd, will be the next Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan Public Meeting at 7:00 PM. Friday, June 24th, will be the next Concert in the Park at 7:00 PM. Monday, June 27th, will be the next Landscape and Shade Tree Commission meeting at 10:00 AM. And Monday, July 4th, the offices will be closed for Independence Day holiday.
Thank you, Randy. You want to just continue with some information on Where's Dam?
Sure. We did run into a bit of a snag with Where's Dam during our bid process. We did not receive any bids. However, we did have interest in the bids, and which encouraged us to move forward and actually re-advertise this project immediately in the paper. So the project's been re-advertised on June 13th and will again be re-advertised in the local newspaper June 17th. We'll have our mandatory pre-bid meeting on June 23rd. Questions will be submitted through PennBid no later than June 26th. The township will conduct a bid opening on July 8th and seek BOC action to award a contract by July 20th.
Any comments for Randy on Where's Dam? Okay, thank you. Turning it over to Greg Adams for a comprehensive plan update.
Good evening. As mentioned earlier, there are two comp plan meeting workshops this month. The regularly scheduled workshop was held last Tuesday. That was June 7th. The staff synthesized community utilities was reviewed and approved for posting on township website. Housing was then reviewed and comments were collected, and the staff will begin synthesizing comments next week. As there were no projects to tomorrow's regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, we converted it over to the second workshop meeting. It will be a typical joint BOC-PC workshop. It will begin at 7 and end at 9. We will, it will be both in-person and virtual, and we encourage everyone to attend and make comments. We will be reviewing the community facilities chapter of the comp plan. We will have Steve Walk from Parkland School District on hand, Mike Kukets, Ashley Eichlin, and Stephanie Maluski from Barry Isit. They're working on the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. They'll be on hand to discuss the Parks and Recreation. And Chris Kiskaravich will be here to discuss the emergency services. Finally, Hannah Clark of Michael Baker will be present, who will present the draft community outreach plan. So that's the comp plan update for June.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. Any comments for Greg? Randy, back to you on Jordan Creek Greenway.
So we do have a brief update, although these, the five alternates have just come in. There was another alternate suggested by Michael Baker. However, we just got these in, I think it was late yesterday, so we really haven't had time to dive into it. So I'm not really prepared to present these options here tonight, but they do range in cost to under $100,000 to over $2 million. So staff has a lot of thinking and conversations to have with the engineers and will likely be bringing back a recommendation for the board's consideration at a subsequent meeting date.
Thank you, Randy. Any comments from Randy on that? Okay, moving on to direction discussion. We have Michael Ias, president, who's going to discuss Nestle Purina will-serv letter for water supply.
Good evening, everyone. Nestle Purina, located at 2050 Pope Road, has
has requested a Will Serve Letter from South Whitehall Township. The request is asking for up to 500,000 gallons per day of water to be used as drinking water as well as its manufacturing needs. Public Works felt it necessary to bring this before the Board of Commissioners for discussion during direction and discussion portion of the meeting. It's a large ask. We've been working with Nestle. I don't know if they were able to make it tonight. They were aware that this was on the agenda for direction and discussion. Myself, obviously, Herb, and Jason Newhart, our engineer from Spot Stevens, is here to answer, help answer any questions if they get real technical for engineering.
So I know what you're all thinking. Do we have the water to sell? Right, do we have it, half a million? So short answer to that is yes, okay? We did an analysis about a year and a half ago when Nestle was kind of putting overtures out to us about purchasing that much water. So we did a memo and analysis and provided the staff. So what we did was we handicapped your system when we did the analysis by taking off your largest producing well. Just pretending it don't exist, okay? And that's your Jacoby well down on Midland. Then what we did was we also factored in Ridge Farms usage that we already know is going to happen. It's going to be drawing out of that Brickyard tank, okay? We also took the peak day, which was a July, like 18th of 2019, when we did the analysis. So what we did was we tracked, based on your SCADA system, which is your supervisory control analysis that the operators use, we could track how much the tank would draw down with Nestle's usage in addition to what you use, all right, the township uses. So the short answer is yes. But long-term, we're going to have to seriously look at another reservoir to meet needs in the future.
So would this in any way affect our residents' pressure, supply, anything like that?
No, what's beautiful about the way your system's designed is everything goes to the Brickyard tank, which is the highest point in your system. So the pressures themselves would not be affected because Nestle is going to extend down Huckleberry Road to the rear of their site. There will be a direct feed from that tank. And they would be doing it on their dollar.
Commissioner Osborne?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. So the request is to take their allocation today and increase it to 500,000?
Right now, they are not a customer.
That was going to be my question.
They are not a customer. They have wells on-site, which are not adequate for production of what they want to increase to.
That's my second question, if they have any on-site wells?
They do. And we've also asked, okay, could we horse trade and maybe get wells as sources?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the short answer is no, because they have high nitrates. They're sort of, they're not really contaminated, but they wouldn't be worth water, potable water wells.
So can I ask, what do they use their, you, do they have three on-site wells, did you say?
At least.
What do they use that water for?
Production water, wet food and wash down water.
Okay.
They want to expand apparently to the point where they will need that much water.
Yeah, which, which is good.
Sure is.
But this actually goes to a question that I had asked during the budget season, I believe it was, when I talked about allocation and our future planning for that allocation. I think the answer that I was given was first in, first in, whatever the order is, they're, they're.
Well, for sewer, that's accurate because of the restrictions of the Kiss Basin that you're in. Water, you're kind of, it's kind of wide open, you know?
Actually, you're right. Thank you for.
Yeah, water, you're kind of wide open. As long as we have it to sell, I think you can sell it.
Yeah.
So Mr. Zader?
Jason, water and sewer billing sort of run in tandem. I recognize sewer allocation, water allocation are very different. But given the usage that's intended, is there going to be any kind of commensurate large request for sewer capacity, given the client's island?
No, because they are, they have an on-site treatment right now, and they're currently in land development to upgrade and redo that treatment plant. How far, are they almost complete, Greg? Yeah, they're, they're spending significant money on their plant on-site. Because I know there's been past odor complaints and things going on there. They say they're going to solve those with the upgrade.
So if I could, thank you. If I can go back, and if you answered, I apologize. The wells, the producing wells that they have now, you said are used for production. So none of those wells, what's being used for drinking water?
Their wells, yeah. They're adding chlorine and some other minor treatment for themselves.
Okay. Do you, do you know the, the breakdown?
No, I don't.
Okay.
And they wouldn't share everything with me.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you.
Now, they will continue to use those wells to augment fire production or fire storage.
Sure.
And it will be separated, so there won't be no cross connection or anything.
So what they're asking for, the allocation they're asking for, is that canal will be for drinking? So it is also?
It's production, yeah.
Production.
Wet food and wash water, yeah.
Yeah. Do they give a timeframe?
Well, they want it as soon as they can get it. However, the realistic timeframe is probably about this time next year if they were to start construction like next week, which we know is not feasible.
Thank you.
So it's, it's for new construction, new production?
They want to expand on their site, yes.
Okay.
Apparently pet food is in demand, so they say.
My question's very general. We'll look at a situation like this and, you know, such a large quantity of water. I appreciate you telling us that, that we have the water. So that's like the current evaluation. But one has to think about, what are the possible unintended consequences of agreeing to provide this water? And then someday in the future?
You mean potentially shorting yourself on production?
Yeah, what are the risks or?
Well, there is a slight risk if you lose multiple wells. That's why we handicap your system by taking out the biggest well. And you could still meet the demand and be able to make the water up over 24-hour period, okay? You also, don't forget, you also buy from the city, which I know it's a little more expensive, but that's kind of erasing the whole with those connections. If you needed to augment water quickly, you can in a 24-hour period should something happen with your wells.
Yeah, Mike, if the well would go down and we do have to take more from the city, we average about 866,000 gallons a day. But we can take up to 1.2 million from the city a day.
And that peak day that we analyzed on was when Dorney was still in full swing, while they were open.
I had a question. Will Purina be capped at the 500,000 gallons they're asking for?
Yes, you could enter into an agreement with, with the allocation to say that this is all we can provide. And if you go over it, we either surcharge you or you say no more. What's that?
Thank you.
Yeah, or, yeah, they're going to have to pay additional fees and figure out what to do at that point.
Any other comments?
Based on that, those amounts, this would bring in about 1.2 million in additional revenue in the water fund each year if they hit that $500,000 gallon per day.
And will this ever? Is it going to potentially cause the township to need to either expand the reservoir up at Brickyard or add an additional one? I mean, at what point are we going to over, overuse that?
So, yeah, Diane, eventually, yes. They, we would have to, with other needs that may occur in that northern area, we may end up having to have another reservoir.
And would that be?
Unofficially been approached by, by LCA to serve the northern areas with a direct buy.
So over and above this?
Over and above that.
Right.
Who would incur the cost of, of building that reservoir?
Well, you're, you're.
I have a.
Your allocation and tapping.
You're tapping in allocation fees just for Nestle at 500,000 gallons a day is $7,882,320, just in tapping fees. And to build the reservoir, we're going to be anywhere between 4.5 million and 5 million to build another 3 million gallon reservoir. So the tapping fees and allocation can cover the addition of the reservoir right away.
And they're aware of that? Of, of the tapping fee of 7 million?
Yes.
They were aware of it, yeah.
Yes, they have all this information.
With your authorization tonight, I will send them the Will Serve Letter with that calculation again.
Yeah, that, we didn't want to send the Will Serve Letter without the board being on board to bring them on. That's why we brought this here tonight.
Any, one more question, Mr. Zader? There are obviously projects in the pipeline from the planning commission right now. Is there a capacity left?
Okay, what was the question again, Joe?
Is there a water capacity for projects that are in the pipeline now? This capacity is given to Nestle.
Depends which project. So yes, Ridge Farms will be able to be served because we now analyze that. But if you're talking about the one in the extreme corner with the large warehousing, probably not. That one.
Thank you. Sir, you had a question. I stepped, the microphone, please.
My family's lived in this township since the 50s, and we always had the best water. Unfortunately, now I'm being served by the inter, the interconnection and getting Allentown City water, and it's not nearly as good as it used to be.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any in the chat? Diane, are you all right? Any other comments?
No, I'm good. I just, I'm just wondering if attorney Zader has, has looked at this. I appreciate the question he just gave regarding other developments that are for the planning commission. And have we looked at this as a whole for future township needs that we are aware of? And if it, if it is going to not have enough water, if we add in all of those projects, you know, then again, what does that mean for the township? Just an overall question.
Thank you, Diane.
Vice President Kennedy?
Sure. Just personally, I would like to have a little bit more time to, to ask questions and maybe get more information from staff. And it would be more in terms of what is the long-term impact if we were to do this?
Especially with other planning plans, yeah, it makes sense.
That's why Herb wanted to bring this to you.
No, I, we appreciate that, yeah.
So should we table it for tonight?
We'll table the Will Serve. We hear, I, I agree with that. We should table the Will Serve.
Yeah, yeah, so I con, I concur with Commissioner Osborne. And I keep saying, as a practice in our township, rather than an oral report, could we have the written report? You've done an analysis. So as, as we go into this further review, could, could you send us, you know, whatever evaluation was done, just so we have it in front of us in black and white? I, I believe everything you said, but, you know, as we contemplate.
It's, I try, you know, you try to write it on a level that everybody can understand. But again, if you have questions, please contact me, I can answer them.
Sure, we're not saying no, we're just saying we need some more time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we hear a motion to table the item tonight?
Motion table.
And Diane Kelly, all those in favor of tabling the Nestle's Will Serve Letter?
We have it.
All right, in favor, aye. Opposed, five oh carries, thanks. Just let them know we need some time to think about it. Scott, you're on for a budget update. The process, not the.
This is just an announcement.
Okay.
Yes, we will be having a 15-minute portion of the July 13th workshop meeting dedicated toward high-level board goals. So if each one of you could think of five things, high level, so don't get into individual accounts, high level, what you want to see in the 2023 budget. We're going to try to limit this to 15 minutes at the workshop meeting. But we want to hear the board direction. We want to hear your ideas. We want to hear what you have. So, thank you.
Scott, may I make a suggestion?
Hey, Diane.
Our, our workshop is going to be very full. Is it possible we could do this just at the next BOC meeting under discussion?
We could. On the, on July 20th.
July, July.
Well, either. I just recall our, our conversation at our last meeting. We were saying how full our workshop's going to be.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
And we could even email them in advance if that helps to speed things along.
That would be perfect. In fact, I'll send an email tomorrow just reminding everybody.
I think that'd be helpful. That's, I'll leave it up to the rest of the board for conversation on that.
Yeah, because we do have a full agenda on the 20, on the 13th. Apparently, we've been adding and adding and adding. We, you know, so, yeah, Brett.
Thank you. Scott, if I could just ask if you would be willing to, this is just for me if others aren't interested as well. But if you could maybe point our eyes to, to these areas that may be of concern or interest to the staff so that we're not giving you 25 different ideas, none of which are addressing what your concerns might be?
Sure.
Thank you. That would help focus me.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that would, yeah, 25 ideas isn't going to help if they're, if they're off, off track.
Exactly.
For sure.
Yeah, so, all right, good idea.
Maybe, maybe a basic frame, maybe a basic framework of what, what Scott wants to see, and then we can add to it.
Yeah. Yeah, it is a long.
We can do that, yeah.
All right, very good. Thanks, Scott. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, you're right. Okay, I, I courtesy the floor. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Oh, actually, you know what? I did have something under. Is it too late? All right, wait till next. Under Direction Discussion, I had a question. At the last comp plan meeting, we were talking a little bit about a potential tree preservation ordinance. And, you know, exactly what I'm talking about. I was just wondering on, I don't know, thoughts of the board and how maybe?
Sorry. Seventeen?
With that?
Right here.
Yeah, I think that was. Brad, do you want to address that?
So are you asking to move that ahead of the comp plan or?
Was that going to be part of the comp plan, that we were going to add that tree ordinance?
I believe that was one of the, we could add that as a recommendation.
Okay, perfect, that's, that's.
I think that's what Dave said we were looking to do.
Yep.
I remember, all right.
I'm sorry, back to a public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Hodges, and I'll second it. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five oh carries, thank you. There were no executive sessions to report at this time, right prior to adjournment. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Mike Walk as this will be Randy Cope's last official BOC meeting. And I'd like to turn it over to Mike as the sitting, longest sitting member present. I know Diane and Mike started at the same time. Mike being present that we'd like to make a presentation to Randy. So, right, Commissioner Walk?
Thank you. First, I have my personal comments, and some other commissioners may as well. So for Randy, you've done an outstanding job during your last nine months as our South Whitehall Interim Township Manager and during your last eight years as our Operations Manager with oversight for Public Works and Parks and Recreation. You've demonstrated tremendous leadership, competence, and maturity in your tenure. Your honesty and integrity are impeccable and unassailable. You should be very proud of your contribution and your accomplishments at South Whitehall Township, which have been invaluable. Personally, you can count on me to be a resource who will provide unconditional support to you both professionally and personally in the future. I'm delighted for you that you've been selected as the North Whitehall Township Permanent Township Manager. I'm confident that you'll do an excellent job, and best wishes for your future success.
Thank you, Commissioner Walk, much appreciated. If I could just take a quick moment to thank the board for this opportunity. It's been a delightful opportunity for me, a learning experience. I, I feel like I've grown in this position. I would not walk away happy today if I didn't thank the staff as well. They have been an absolute pleasure to work with. We have an outstanding team here in South Whitehall, and I'm very confident I'm leaving this place in good hands. Thank you.
All right, so now I'll read a proclamation. South Whitehall Township Distinguished Service Award presented to Randall T. Cope. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Township Staff, and citizens of South Whitehall Township would like to recognize your eight years of service to South Whitehall Township beginning April 14th, 2014, to July 1st, 2022. We thank you for your stellar service as Parks and Recreation Manager, Director of Township Operations, and as the Interim Township Manager. Your outstanding commitment to our township has truly been an example and inspiration to all. Therefore, it is with great pride and appreciation. and appreciation that the Board of Commissioners and Township Staff hereby presents this token of our gratitude to you, Randall T. Coop. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with you, and we are deeply grateful to you. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Please know you will be greatly missed. Duly presented by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and Township Staff, this 15th day of June 2022, in lawful session duly assembled, signed by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Diane Kelly, David M. Kennedy, Monica Hodges, myself, Mike Walk, and Brad Osborne.
Randy, I felt it was appropriate to have Mike do that as the longest-serving board member present tonight. I only worked with you a short time. I learned a lot from you, and I hope, I wish you the very best up in North Whitehall Township. And you've done in my short period of time, I've, you've done a great job. I saw the passion, and I certainly do appreciate that. And I know that will carry through. And hopefully you have less nights than you have here to enjoy with your family. And thank you. Any other comments? Monica?
I do. Yeah, thank you. You stepped in when the township really needed you, and you've done a great job. You've been here for all of us, always kind and gracious and answered my questions, and I appreciate that. Don't be a stranger, and you'll be missed. I'm so excited for you and your family. I really am.
Randy, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Honestly, it means a lot. It's not easy to walk away from this. I've built a lot of friendships, professional relationships with commissioners, staff members, our professional team at Zader's office, Pidcock, SSM, our fire companies. Thank you.
Just let everybody know Randy still has 15 days to go.
Thank you. Yes, I'll echo what everyone already said. Randy, Randy, I'm going to say it's not goodbye. It's so long. You will just be next door. But we certainly do appreciate all that you've done with our board, certainly since last September, but for the many years you've given to the township. So thank you for your commitment, and we wish you and your family all the best in this new journey.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Again, 15 more days. You're not done. Just last meeting. That's all it is. With that, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Diane, for calling in.
Thank you all.
All right.
This conference will.